Here. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the living and the dead as its law.
What's on your mind?
Okay, Mayor, if I may, I have a presentation for Justin Alfieri. So, Justin is a Belvo resident. So, Justin is a Belvo resident. So, Justin is a Belvo resident, and he's still going. So, Justin has been awarded ten scholarships this year, honors all, and that deserves a very big round of applause. So, if I may, in this population, whereas Belvo High School held its forty-oneth senior award ceremony on Friday, June seventh, two thousand and eighteen, to announce and recognize the qualified recipients of this year's scholarship. And whereas, Justin Alfieri is the recipient of not one or two, but an impressive ten scholarships awarded during his senior awards night, including Belvo Unico, Metley-Belvo Plum State Parade, Belvo Fire Officers Local Twenty-Nine, Sam Albino Memorial Scholarship, Suburban Essex Chamber of Commerce, Belvo AARP, Belvo Elks Lodge, Belvo Rotary Club, Erwin W. Folk Memorial Scholarship, Belvo Political and Social Club Scholarship, and the Columbus Citizens Foundation Scholarship, which is also a national scholarship. Whereas, the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belvo find it fitting to So, who else doesn't know this? This is Michelle Quick, who's our court reporter. This is also her boss, your son, right?
Thank you for presenting this award, and thanks, Michelle, for helping me get this scholarship.
Next presentation?
Yes, Mayor, Council like to, Councilwoman, the army and myself, like to present President Chris Libarado, Belvo Education, and Vice President Nelson Barara.
Whereas, a driveway exists on Belvo Board of Education property providing ingress from Division Avenue and Egress on Chupacake Avenue, for vehicles to park and walk past through at the high school and Board of Educational offices. Whereas, the Board of Education has determined it is in its best interest to name the driveway. And whereas, the Belvo Board of Education finds it fitting to name its driveway Buccaneer's Drive, in recognition and honor of the high school's longstanding mascot, Buccaneer. Now therefore, we agree so that the mayor and municipal council, the township of Belvo, hereby congratulate Belvo High School's mascot Buccaneer upon the naming of the driveway
Oh, we just want to thank everybody. After all of our work is done in the front of the building, we figure this is a nice way so you know where you're driving into, and we couldn't think of a better name than Buccaneer's.
For what minutes?
The organization meeting of July first, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion approved. Motion made. Second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Redding meeting of June fourth.
Motion approved. Motion made. Second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Astine.
Graziano?
Astine.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Astine.
Reporters manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's start with one of our favorite topics that I want to give you a staff report on, the Silver Lake Firehouse. The construction is complete. The firehouse is absolutely gorgeous. We just have a little more retrofitting to do. We have some radio equipment, some fire alarm equipment that needs to be installed, and we'll have to get some lockers for our firefighters and some other small apparatus. We anticipate the house being functional by October, November. With the ceremony, we are shooting for the middle of September, the middle to the end of September. My next item this evening concerns a sanitary sewer repair that occurred on July thirty-first. Actually, with a manhole sanitary sewer on Geraldo and the floor blower, which is some thirty feet deep that has been repaired and replaced. We repaired a sanitary sewer at Thirty-Four Franklin, replaced the sanitary lateral at Ninety-Seven Franklin, and that was thirty feet of four-inch pipe. At Eugene and Hanus, we had a road collapse due to an improper backfilling by the York Water Department, but that has since been rectified. It's been filled, there's a backfill and tamped. We removed a tree on August seventh at Thirty-Six Yeward Street that actually fell out of house. Also, on August seventh, we had trees fell out of Smallwood, taking down wires. Public service was called because our forces are not certified to work in that area, but we did assist them, and after they took all the trees down, they replaced two poles. On September eleventh, which is our next meeting, we will be introducing a budget amendment, and part of the delay has been additional information that the state required from us, and right now, we are anticipating adoption on September eleventh. That's all I have.
Reporters manager, any questions?
Yeah, I have something. I'd just like to apologize to everyone for being so cold in here. So, speaking of that, is the manager, could we please?
How did you do not set the thermostat?
Yeah, so can we please have our air conditioner contact the AC company, please?
I'm actually shivering.
Yeah. And Justin, you go home.
Okay, so, next is reporter, the mayor. I actually have a couple items to discuss. Again, this is probably our second time doing this line item in the agenda. In the next couple of weeks, meaningful meetings will also be an opportunity for council to give some updates on some of the various committees they're a part of. I'm going to just run through a small, little bit of items. National Night Out was a great success, and I'll thank the police chief who's here tonight for helping organize that. I remember the days when the National Night Out Against Crime was actually a grant that the federal government gave us. They no longer do that, and it's something that this police department has funded for the community ever since. And quite a great night. We barely beat the rain. I found out the chief has a great interest in antique cars, has been judged an antique car show, and he picked the winners and left it to me to actually award them, which means I made three people happy and eight people were not happy. Quick update, recently, in the planning board meeting, there was a planning board meeting, the old dilapidated building that's called Old Town Hall on Washington Avenue was approved for redevelopment there. That is going to be converted into commercial first floor, and a bunch of new units there, brand-new construction, something that I'm really interested and happy about. Some communications, we did receive communication with the American-Chinese Association. Anybody who's familiar with Belvo history knows that we have a very rich history with Chinese-Americans here in Belvo. Belvo was actually the first little Chinatown in the eastern seaboard, and they've asked us for a letter of commendation recognizing them. I will be attending their picnic with about a thousand people in attendance this coming Sunday. Senior stuff, quick senior update, we did promise that we were going to really be looking at seniors and trying to get them the best services that they deserve. To that end, they had requested of myself and Councilwoman Depena, when we rode their bus with them, that they had wanted to go to Clifton, if you remember that. We only allowed the bus to go to Belvo and Nutley, and they had an interest in going to Target and some of Kohl's and that shopping center there, so through our health department, they will be going to Clifton this coming week, I believe. Other than that, we've also had them go into the farmer's market, and so all seniors that are here or watching us, they are going to the farmer's market in Cedar Grove, which is a great opportunity because they actually get twenty-five dollars' worth of fresh produce if they attend that. Again, our senior boss and our health department's doing that. Council committees, you'll be getting them in the next couple of weeks. Interestingly, and I kind of was a little surprised yesterday, I got a phone call from the governor's office, and they were literally just asking us how we fared during the recent rain and all the flooding. And that was a great conversation to have, it was a great call to get, I was very grateful for that call, more grateful that we fared very well. We're worried this afternoon with some more flooding that came in, but actually, Belvo did quite well. Chief, police chief and I had a meeting with parking meter companies, so we have a lot of dead parking meters that do not work in Belvo, and they're also stuffed probably in the nineteen-fifties or sixties, maybe. So, we're going to be upgrading them. It's not going to cost us anything, it's a pilot program that we're going to do with a couple of different meters, so we're very, very happy about that. Myself and Councilman Graziano met with Dr. Tomco from the school district. I believe that was probably the first time he was ever in this building, and we just met with him to let him know if he want to work with the Board of Ed, and I see the two members here now, and that we want them to be able to work with us, and we discussed a couple of different things that I think that was great to know. There will be one new upgrade to today's meeting, and I announced this during the pre-meeting, anybody that was here, public participation, or what's now called public commenting on the agenda, that's your opportunity to speak. You can speak anything you want, you have five minutes to speak. There's other portions of the meeting for those of you who aren't normal to these meetings, and again, we encourage that. I see a lot of familiar faces that are usually here, but for the benefit of those coming to their first meeting, you have to kind of get the flow of the meeting. And a lot of times, it's not that we don't want you, it's just specific times when you can and cannot speak. So, you have an opportunity to speak while we pass or vote on certain ordinances for a second reading, but that's only on those ordinances. For the benefit of those who are here for the first time or not here often, during public commenting, you have the opportunity to speak. The one change that we're making now is the fact that when you do speak, you either will pre-sign in, for those of you who I saw kind of ran up here and signed in. If you did not pre-sign in, you still have the opportunity to speak. The reason why we're doing that is because you must stand up to be acknowledged and state your name and your address for the record. That's common, that has never changed. That's not changing now. That's only the information you need to give. What we have a problem with here, myself, mayor, and council people, and even the town manager, is we hear a lot of comments, and we often want to try to address those comments the next day. And if you just stand up in the back of the room and give me your name and your address, I might not be able to track you down the next day. I spend the next day after a town meeting in Town Hall, and some items we can't address. So, what you're going to do when you sign in here, and every other town that I'm aware of does it this way, by the way, this is not, it's been unique to Belvo that we haven't done it this way, is that you'll stand up here, you'll speak, and you'll have the option, and you don't have to give it, but you have the option to give your address or your email address. So, this way, if you have a specific concern, and somebody up on this dais wants to contact you tomorrow, we can come in, we can call the clerk, we can get your information to contact you. Simple as that, there's no other reason for that. But that's part of a new feature that we have. A lot of people have made some suggestions after the last livestream council meeting that they could not hear well, and you'll see that I'm speaking directly into my microphone today. I've asked the rest of the council members to do the same. This equipment that we're dealing with is three decades old. It was never set up for live streaming. After some of the last, we'll call them concerns, not complaints, after the last council meeting about the audio quality, Tuesday, I was on the phone with the company, the next day, Wednesday, we met with the company, we had proposals in to revamp all the audio, and you have better mics, better speaker systems, almost everything. So, bear with us with that. I'm going to end quickly with some upcoming events. We have, September is basically being themed community. We have our nine-eleven memorial service on September eleventh, which is actually the day of our next council meeting. We have our Just a Party, myself and Councilman Burke, and we're working hard, we're meeting almost weekly on that. We do have some new changes this year to that. We have Jersey Sound is going to be featured there. We also have a live Latin band that's going to be playing. Our Community Shred Day is also September fifteenth, and our Community Garage Sale is September twenty-ninth and thirtieth. We are planning our first-ever food truck festival, which will be combined with the music festival in October, and we're also looking forward to our first-ever Veterans' Day five K one. So, some new things are coming up on the horizon. Street projects are pending, meaning they're going to be worked on, and we're also looking forward to our first-ever restaurant week and Halloween. So, with all that said, and that was a mouthful, but we're going to go forward now into communication, unless, I'm sorry, if any other councilor have a question or comment, or no?
Yeah, one thing, on Friday, myself, the mayor, and our senior representative, Eleanor Barino, had a press conference with our county executive, Jockey D'Enzo, and they wanted to announce some changes that we're going to do to Branch Brook Park, which includes all of the parking areas, and the running tracks are going to be repaved, and also, we're going to increase some safety over there with some more officers. And we, at that time, we also requested some extra work to be done around town from the engineer's office, from the county engineer's office, including crosswalks, push-in flights. I can't announce anything at this time because nothing is approved, but we did make a few requests.
Deputy Mayor Nattori?
I did meet with Mr. Tucci regarding what we talked about at the last meeting. As far as the drama program, we are bringing in James Miles III, who is the producer of the shows in Nutley, and his wife also directs. So, he will be meeting with us while I went over budget, performances, free performances. They are making money in Nutley on these shows. It's open from grades three, three through twelve. And tonight, actually, last week at National Night Out, several parents approached me that were very interested in this, and many of them even wanted to have some type of a committee with volunteers if they can get involved, but I told them first we need to get this in order, but I like that idea. Also, tonight, Councilwoman Depena spoke with me. She's very interested on this. She's got some ideas through the chair. Councilwoman, would you say anything on this issue?
Yeah, I met with Mr. Agosta through the rec house, and we're just looking into the opportunities to expand in terms of visual and performing arts. We understand that not all children are interested in sports, and we want to expand what we do. We want to solidify what we have, but also expand. And we, after the last meeting, took this very seriously. Several parents actually approached us, and we have an artist who is currently running rec program in a different town, and she is from Belvo, so we are in the process of stealing her back so that she can, we can actually establish this program, get active in the rec. Well, of course, there's a lot to look into it, but we're in the beginning stages of that.
This is something we want to do, bring performing arts into this town, and the arts into this town. Besides sports, we do support sports, but it's not for every child, or some kids like both. Thank you.
No, if not, we're going to go on to the next page.
Hey, request for block parties. Do you want to put them all together?
Make motion approve as a block. Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
The request received from Franklin, she walks for a police escort for her fourth annual West Hampton Walk on Saturday, October twentieth, at ten-thirty, beginning at Michael Cross Common to Little River.
Motion approved. Motion made second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number one for introduction, ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter six, alcohol and beverage control.
Motion move it. Second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Astine.
Orders number two for introduction, ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight, dash two point one, three dash twenty-five point two, and three dash twenty-five point three regarding littering.
Motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number eight for introduction, ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, section three dash twenty-five, subsections three dash twenty-five point one, three dash twenty-five point two, and three dash twenty-five point three regarding littering.
Motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number three, four for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash two point two, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number five for introduction, ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash two point two, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number six for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash six, entitled Stop Sign Intersection Designation.
Motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number seven, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash four, one-way streets.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number seven, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash four, one-way streets.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number eight for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, titled Miniscule Parking Lots.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number nine for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, titled Miniscule Parking Lots.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number ten for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, section two dash thirteen, regarding office of the township of Trenton.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number eleven for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash sixteen, entitled Many Capartin Stasis.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number eleven for introduction, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash sixteen, entitled Many Capartin Stasis.
Make a motion move it.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Orders for public hearing, second, final.
Orders number one for public hearing, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash sixteen, entitled Many Capartin Stasis.
Make motion open for public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Motion closed, final, not.
Second.
Motion made in second, to close public participation, for a call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumlberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders number one for second, final reading, and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvo, chapter eight dash sixteen, entitled Many Capartin Stasis.
Make a motion for final, not.
Second.
Motion made in second, for a call roll. Make motion for final round. Second. Motion made in second, per call roll.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Trumilbert?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
All the comments. Motion? Make motion open for all the comments.
Second.
Motion made in second, or open up all the comments, per call roll.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Trumilbert?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Good, okay, so we're gonna just to rehash everyone in here, we're gonna ask you to come on forward, uh, state your name and address for the record, and at some point, we're just gonna need you to sign a book here, uh, optional if you wanna leave your, uh, if you wanna leave your phone number or email address to the U.S.O., and we'll contact you a few days, um, search yourself, I know you've signed in already, but just please take your name and address.
My name is Thomas T. Charlie Senior, and I'm at eighty-six Campbell Street, Chicago. And, uh, I have about two issues that I want to discuss. I have a house next door that has been, uh, the, no, I can't get the words out of my mouth, but, uh, they've been, uh, very lax on doing in the backyard, the grass is run approximately this high, the city has come there twice this year to move along, and you have all kinds of animals, mice, uh, lackeens, possums, uh, all, it's just a disaster, we have, uh, cushions from tables, rain still in the backyard, uh, it's, I have pictures of it, if you don't wanna see it. Show me, see that. You want me to step forward?
Yeah, do you want it to be passed around?
Yeah, except the bottom three, but just without the bottom three.
Not for school.
Even though I'm mad at it, it kind of damaged my fence, but I paid twenty-one hundred dollars to put it, and, uh, the lines have run right through the fence, over the fence, if you look at each picture, they're over the fence, they're all over the place, now the city just cleaned it up, but this happens, like, all year long, we get children with skeeters and whatnot, uh, myself and one of my other neighbors, and I think, uh, Joe was having a conversation about it, because it's just disgusting.
I'm assuming the house is vacant, or abandoned, or?
It was rented out.
But you said the city cleaned it up, that's what I'm?
People were living in it, he rents it out, I believe there, don't quote me on this, there's two to three warrants that is less than my payment up until, okay, and he's just been on foot on just about everything, uh, it's absurd to have to live next to this kind of a house, just recently, people moved out in month of July, and he had someone come and break in his window because he couldn't find the keys, and one of my neighbors said she called the police, and the police came, and he came behind them, uh, behind the guy he hired to go break in his window, and, uh, yeah, his window was still broken and open, and rain was pouring into the house, and, over the winter, he rented a house to an old lady, and, 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 uh, her daughter, and they had a sick son, uh, who, they did not supply heat to for a couple months, their electric still was approx, I saw the, there's approximately thirty hours, and they're fighting over and working.
It's a more cleanup issue, though, right?
Yeah, this guy.
But is it, I, I'm just, I know you mentioned before that the ci- the city cleaned it up, when you say the ci- you mean?
You're part of the public works.
So is it an abandoned house, it was abandoned?
No, it wasn't abandoned, it's still not abandoned, but this guy treats the house like it's piece of rock, he doesn't do anything.
So wait, just so you know, what normally happens is that the manager today, he already has your address, tomorrow the health department looked at it.
Colleen isn't there.
I had.
Colleen has sent people there, uh, to work with her, calling, and she grew.
Did she send her inspector to the house, and then she communicates to the DPD?
But this guy is desperate, and I, I don't know if there's something that could be done to stop a guy from buying houses, because he does buy his houses and runs them into the ground, he doesn't do anything to fix it, I have a back door on this house right far from where my bedroom is, that slams all night long, and you, I, I live in a very modest house, it's more like a bungalow on that block, and the door slams, and you can hear it right through my house, so, it's really, really bad.
We will, we will have an answer for your production.
And, the other issue I want to bring up is, we've got a lot of water lines on our block that break, and I don't know if you saw a picture of the gravel in the street, well, that gravel has been like that for three years now, and the land would, that's the same house, we're supposed to fix that, because people are tripping over it, and that hasn't been fixed yet, the other issue I want to bring up is, of course, we're getting all these broken water lines that run down the block, as you pull up from Bloomfield Avenue, between, uh, Bloomfield and Brook Street, we had water lines break down there, we had two water lines break on my block, we have heavy trucks coming down the street, our street is not equipped to handle those trucks, and from what I understood, those trucks were supposed to be going up and down Belmont Avenue, and not on the other streets, I won't name whose trucks they are, okay, but they're coming down the street, and this is what's causing our water lines, I asked the previous council member to please try to put a sign up, to get these trucks to not come up and down our block, my house, as I said, is more like a bungalow, and they come down the street, my house shifts, I know where they're coming down, I have cameras out, and I can show you pictures of those trucks parked on my street, okay, that shouldn't be, these are big trucks with many cars on them, so you know the way to that truck.
Okay, you have to have these things?
They have to.
Three to five.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are, are you signed in? Okay, you can sign in when you're done.
Uh, my name's Carl Mufia, we're fourteen Brook Street, um, since June, I found out the health department, the building department, uh, evening, I have a building across the street, and went into foreclosure, they sold it, there's containers sitting in the block, people come at night and dump stuff in, there's garbage all over the place, I took pictures, I gave it to the owner, he said, ah, they're not mine, I don't know, whatever, he's had about thirteen containers, and you order a container, it all hours, day and night, they're banging them away, I, I, I mean, I need someone to go there and make this gentleman understand that he cannot make this a garbage dump, I had to put up a six-foot-high stoppage fence in the front of my house, because my wife and I do not like to see all the garbage, it's ridiculous, and he's telling me he works on it, listen, put the container somewhere else, forget the container over the park, they're dumping illegally, people are just coming there with tons of papers, my other problem is, at the end of the block, he knows about it, they, someone sold the building, uh, brick building on the corner, they took the oil tanks out, when they took the oil tanks out, they left it, with, shit, ah, took away, now they're telling me the EPA, we can give them the number, bullshit, they left it, the grass is this high, the windows are falling off the building, the grass all over the place, it's a mess, I have it, which the town, I cannot blame the Department of Public Works for, because I've dealt with that before, but their store on the corner have worked and happened, since May, I've been calling to come clean with floods through the middle of my block, I got rats in my yard, I got shit all over the place from the store, the smell is unbelievable when it rains, and guess what, your truck is broken, you don't have a truck to suck out the store, so, since May till now August, we've had a ton of rain, the amount of money I'm paying in taxes, my street should be spotless, I should not have to deal with this, but I do every single debt, and I've spoken to Marie numerous times about it, I've gone to the building inspectors, got nasty responses from them, the only person that so far has given me any kind of, is the, uh, woman who works for the, um, Department of Public Works, she actually got a branch removed from me, it took her a week and a half to get a branch taken out the street, uh, the other person is the health department, they said they went to the building and they put a sticker on the building, I drive by every day, I don't see anything, no one's contacted me, like, they said they were gonna do it, after I talked to her today, she said, ah, the inspector will call you tomorrow, and I really forgot, it's a mess, and nothing is getting done, and so, I figured, last time I came here, I got shit done, so this time I'll come here, hopefully we'll get this right, because it's dropping the value of my home, my street is small, but you know what, I pay taxes just like everybody else, and it's great that you're doing all this stuff, uh, all these drama and all this, how about fixing the infrastructure of the town, because all that means nothing if the town looks like a mess.
I agree with you.
Okay, so, I mean?
I'm glad, I'm sorry you had to come here.
My whole area, Silver Lake, is going down.
All right, now that you're here, and we have your address, we know the two or three issues, I already know.
Yeah.
Uh, yep, you're signed in, thank you. You sign in, Tony?
Phil, it's Fran Tantoni, what's on your mind, I've got a question, when you, uh, your work session, when you were talking about trimming the trees, since school, we opened them about two weeks, three weeks, I think you should trim the trees around by the schools and around by the intersections by the schools first, this way you can see the signage that's there, you can see the lights, and it really helps the farms, like the kids who walk around shooting, they will get right in the head with the branches, and I wanted to know, resolution number thirty-five, what is that? Do you know it?
That is going to be something that I had requested, um, we've had, and I think you've probably heard me talk about this the last meeting, that one is for the intersection, uh, not the intersection, to create a crosswalk for the Chandelier, right across the street between the Chandelier and Wendy's, and Mulcahy, since we had a couple fatalities there, um, and shockingly, as long as that's been an issue, uh, I realized it's a couple thousand dollar fix, uh, we just had to, we asked the police department to do a traffic study, I think they did, um, this is now a whole policy agreement that we have to get to the county, so that we will either get the county to put that crosswalk, that crosswalk is a similar crosswalk you'll see on Union Avenue by Megros Funeral Home, uh, even Belleville Avenue, where you hit the button, there's solar panel, you hit the button, it blinks, you can cross both ways, it's something, we need to do something on that area, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, let's hear it, and that's what I'm talking about, to get down by the Shopright on Washington Avenue, so that when people cross, somebody's gonna get killed there.
Well, somebody, people have been killed already at, um, Franklin.
Yeah, so if you can get that done over there, hopefully, with the right people doing the work, can get it done by the Shopright, you know, help, you know, so nobody gets hurt, and I wanted to ask you if maybe you would pass a resolution that our governor wants to put all these marijuana stores into municipalities, if we pass this legislation? Well, I've been doing a lot of research on it, and I still feel that marijuana is a drug that if you can't get a high no more, you're gonna go on to other drugs, it happened to my cousin, they found him dead laying in a branch of corn, okay, because you couldn't get the high anymore off the marijuana, plus other people that I know this has happened to, there are other ti- there are towns in Bergen County such as Woodcliff Lake, Loda, Mamaw, Asquith Heights, Barfield, and Washington Township, among many, that have passed resolutions not to have any of these facilities in our town, so I'm just asking this council if they would pass the resolution not to have it in our town, because we don't need anything like that here, we are right next to Newark, and they are against it, my husband and I went to, uh, Black Hawk's meeting in Elizabeth on this about three months ago, four months ago, and let me tell you, if you heard those large men, and you heard people in the, in the medical field speaking of this, this is not good, because they're gonna buy it and resell it, and our kids are the ones who are gonna suffer for it, so please consider it, thank you.
Sir, just make sure you're signing.
I'll sign in after, please. Uh, Mayor Melman, this is a copy of, of a letter, I tried to get to you this, on email, but I couldn't send it, the printer's all messed up, so, I apologize for the over version here. An issue that's been on my mind, uh?
Sir?
Over here, I'm sorry, please.
Sir, actually, I need you to state your name and address.
Also, yeah, Robert Schmidt, four seventeen Portland, Delville.
And, uh, I just need you to address your comments to me, sorry.
I'm gonna teach you, okay, I'll just, I'll just read this real quick, it'll, it won't take five minutes, dear Mayor Melman, we are trying to understand police strategy regarding speeding and violating other laws, excessive engine noise, running stop signs, this is a particular concern to us in view of an arbitrary mean-spirited speeding ticket, it was bestowed upon my wife years ago in what appeared to be a Christmas fundraiser on Main Street, uh, she was coming home from Stop and Shop with two hundred dollars worth of groceries, the police waved her over and gave her a ticket for going thirty-five on River Road, actually, the young police officer who gave her this ticket kind of apologized, he's, he's kind of implying that they were expected to do this, so we lost four hundred and fifty dollars for her to go like thirty-five miles an hour, uh, fast forward to today, every day, there are speeders below on Portland Street, Stevens Street, far surpassing thirty-five miles an hour, we have some regulars, I've identified two authorities before, who, uh, do it regularly, uh, we've taken, we've seen token measures in the past, I mean, I'm talking years ago, all of this issue, we have, uh, a banning police car, an unoccupied police car sitting out front, hoping it might stop people, we have the your speed is such and such sign up, which is a little bit, it'd be good if there were police officers waiting on the other side to get tickets for those who speed limits, we're going beyond whatever, you know, um, as I write this, there's some guy going past me, right, as I was writing this, this obnoxious nitrous racer engine thing, I'm sure you've heard that, it's extraordinarily loud, this guy speeds every morning, I told someone in the police department about this guy, every, every single morning, I could set my watch by it from, uh, goes from Terry Street to Jolloman, flat out, that's his thing, nobody ever pays any attention to him, um, I was standing on the curb the other day with a woman who was emptying her, her car, giving us something, my wife needs, this one regular guy came and pulled up right next to her, and revved his engine, I don't know, three hundred decibels probably, and then just floored it from Terry Street down to Little Street, he knew what he was doing, he was being obnoxious, he was wanting to impress us or scare us, whatever, I'm sick of that kind of behavior, uh, I think it's only fair, at the very minimum, to trap speeders who are going thirty-five, above thirty-five, and give them a ticket, often, motorcycles are brazen violators, as we well know, speeding, excessive noise, they flaunt their defiance of the law too much, nobody holds them accountable, there's gotta be some options, some that can be done, like speed bumps, Jersey City uses speed bumps, enforcement cameras, which I would love to see, take pictures of those that are speeding or running stop signs, that they often do in front of our house, give, send them a ticket, uh, I'm sorry, uh, anyway, something needs to be done, it's, uh, Terry Street to Jolloman, on, uh, on, on Portland and on Stevens Street, it's a very drag strip, I'm walking my dog, cars are blazing past there at least fifty miles an hour, so, dear, uh, Mayor, I urge you to consider this, look into something that can be done, slow these people down somehow, uh, speed bumps, I would love to see, I always wanted to get a remote control speed bump, but, they're violating laws, and they're endangering people, and they're, they need to be controlled, so, anyway, that's my two bits.
Please, sir, if you haven't done so yet, you're gonna sign.
Sorry.
You want me to sign in now?
Uh, you would say your name, and you signed in before I?
Harry, it means one forty-eighth Wrighton Avenue? Want my phone number, I need?
Only if you want to get it.
I have a suggestion before I make any comments, that you provide a microphone, so everybody can hear comments from the public, because I'm sure some of these comments concern everyone, because I couldn't hear these good people speak up here, I could hear you speaking, but I couldn't hear them, so, could you consider that for the future, to provide a microphone for the speaking public? Yes or no?
This is not a conversation, ma'am, you state your.
Okay, so you can't decide now whether you can provide a microphone for the speaking public, thank you, okay, this is what I want to say tonight.
I actually already announced.
Good evening, everybody, good evening.
You missed that part of me.
Can we speak now?
I'm sorry, you guys can answer, you got one.
Okay, as a concerned taxpayer, not only limited to Belleville only, but of taxpayers older municipalities in New Jersey, why is the new Belleville website exactly the same template as that for Guttenberg and Linden, how can you justify charging those taxpayers in Guttenberg and Linden eighty thousand dollars a year for websites while you claim that the Belleville website is for free, is it possible that the people in Guttenberg and Linden, uh, are picking up the cost from the Belleville website, uh, zor, what, in eighty thousand dollars, I mean, are we subsidizing, are they subsidizing us?
Three more minutes.
Are they, can you answer the question?
This is not a conversation.
Okay, so, I left your record, so you, you're refusing to answer the question, thank you.
Sorry, I'll get you now. Just please sign in.
My name is Erica Docow, I live at one fifteen Ralph Street, Belleville, so I just wanted to mention, um, thank you for, thank you everyone, um, our mayor and council, is what I mean, uh, for being present and being productive, and I'm really happy to see that you guys are all hands on deck, and you guys are actually out in the community, and you are being seen in the community, um, on August sixth, two thousand eighteen, there was a Belleville Police Post on Facebook that, um, stated that they visited a local daycare here in Belleville, and they digitized the students as honorary police officers, and, uh, for the day, and that is wonderful, but hopefully this, um, can expand somehow in Belleville, I'm currently a mom volunteer for the Essex County Cops for Kids, and explores post one eighty-three, which consists of over eighty kids who are registered, we have significantly changed their lives, um, by rooting them with life skills, character skills, and some kids have, that have actually, um, aged out of the program, have gone on to become police officers, this program is very important, and is run by Armando Adol, who is the Essex County Sheriff Officer, on the volunteer basis, and I look forward to being, uh, that bridge to link that program here, perhaps at some point in Belleville, since it's in Essex County's approach, and it's a free program, um, I wanted to mention that, um, item seventeen has a misspelling, and I just wanted to make sure that when, if it's approved, those miss, the spelling of that person is rectified, and, uh, corrected on the confirmation, and I appreciate in advance the support of the diversity in the town, um, throughout the years of the year twenty-seven years, and I want to thank you, uh, from the bottom of my heart, for actually, um, embracing it, and, uh, lastly, um, I'm currently the chair for the Community Committee at the Bureau of Education, and I look forward to being, um, some sort of a bridge also between our town and our Board of Ed, thank you.
Would you mind just giving the clerk the, uh, correction? I'm sorry, just, just touch on one last, I, I, I promise I did. Just please sign in, ma'am.
Have to go through there. And let's put it this way, going to the hospital is not fun enough without any dents in the ramp. So that's that. The grass needs to be cut at said firehouse. Cause, uh, and God bless your secretary. And the lovely people who answer the phone. They don't know which firehouse is closed. No?
The other guy couldn't hear me.
That's my point. That would be my point. I called last time about the grass, the grass, and they're like, they called me back for like, which firehouse? I'm like, we have three, one is closed, the other two are open, that's what I said to her. Uh, I think like, um, I think I'm in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant Antoni, while you're signing in, Mr. Tucci.
Oh, okay. You're welcome, sir. My wife signed me in.
You are.
Well, we'll get you in.
Okay. Well, Mr. Grant Antoni signing in, Mr. Tucci, can you address the firehouse?
Yes, Carmella, I got a, uh, several meetings with the chief. As you know, that firehouse was very old and in need of much repair.
Right.
It's since been totally rehabilitated, the construction has all done. The equipment and the radio equipment and the fire alarm systems that are in there are antiquated. Alright, so they could not be used again. So, that's the equipment that we're waiting for, we need to get that installed in there. We need to lock this fire and once that's done, uh, we should be operational in October, November.
We know what you're gonna ask.
No.
Mr. Grant Antoni.
Yes, I don't want to sign in, I don't want you calling back, I just want action, I don't want to ask you.
No problem.
The, uh...
We know where to find you anyway.
If I'm trading, because I'm nervous.
I am shivering, I'm shivering, I'm shivering.
Yeah. And I made the suggestion for many years, just change the, the, uh, grills on this blockwork. Have these things up, have the adjustable ones where you can close them all. It keeps having everything falling down and everybody's... So, um, the first thing, I came last month, and once again, I've done for years, I've asked that, we seal the cracks in the street for preventive maintenance. And last month, Mr. Tucci, like he always says, oh yes, we could do that, but it's another time. Now, it's the middle of August, we're losing the eighty and ninety degree states when it should be done. When are we gonna do this preventive maintenance? Now, we can do all these great civic programs and all that, but like another gentleman said, we need some action on the hard stuff to be done. Now, we've got three weeks maybe of good weather to seal them, or are we gonna send a crew out to seal the cracks in the streets? Some of our newer streets, they're very cracked, they're ready, we can extend the life of them anywhere from three to six years. And Mr. Tucci, for years, he's been here, and previous ma... Yes, yes, yes. Haven't seen you drop a car in the streets.
Yes, exactly true. Go ahead.
The, uh, again, I've got an elderly widow next door to me, and her railroad ties to small mall, um, water walk, it's lean a little bit, she wants to repair it. We were not, she called five contractors from Yellow Pages. Bellevue, we ain't working in Bellevue, not the earth construction bar, and the hassle we have to go through. So, one of them finally agreed that you went down for a permit. Last month, she went down, and she don't need a zoning permit, she only needs a zoning permit. Fifty dollars. So, what happened, she had to get the job, signed up. So, she asked me to go there last week. I go down, the fee went up from fifty to a hundred dollars now. I mean, this is one of the things that's hurting Bellevue, if you keep raising these fees, they're astronomical, alright? So, something's gotta be done now, but this is just a month, the lady went down, you know, from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars, just for a zoning permit, not, you know, no plans, no nothing, just to replace some railroad ties. So, we gotta do something about that. Um, and in regards to your walking Washington Avenue, I'm not, I don't know if you heard from them, one of the problems is, these businesses, I know at least three of them in the last six years, uh, people, all them businesses, they last a year, they can't afford. One girl and her boyfriend had a store, she done thirteen months, she will die, so it's great moving out. She says, I work seven days a week, I don't do business, alright? And I take home one week's pay, all the rest is done for the rent and the overheads. And so, when you raise taxes, the landlord raises rents. You wanna help Washington Avenue, you gotta reduce taxes, so we, the people can afford the money businesses, I'm not with that. And in regards to your comments on, on trees, uh, Mr. Mayor, you were the one, I have the front page article of you and Mayor searching, uh, standing next door to Cherry Blossom Trees. The worst tree, the plant, they're park tree. Uh, Goldup, I just walked on my daughter's road last night, home street, they lift up the sidewalks. Uh, I have pictures of the sweepers going down the streets, they can't sweep the streets. The trees are too low, and so they go around them. I got pictures, you see all the water from the, the brushes, it's going around all the streets, so they don't clean the streets there. The other thing they do, they lift up sidewalks, and they continually produce shooters from the bottom, which are hard to maintain, public work going through so much, you, you can't keep criminals free, right? The other problem with them, the cherry blossoms, uh, when they pop out, the pink leaves, on the granite curb, they're very slippery. Then, you get out, right, the streets are covered in pink, it's all over your car, it's all over your house, you track them in there. They're a park tree, they don't belong. So, I think I heard, say, hey, Washington Avenue, please, don't put them on Washington Avenue, or any trees. I got business on Washington Avenue, some of the trees, the leaves come in, the wind blow them into your business, and it's a mess, right? And in fact, I, even before Mr. Tucci, you can leave, Goldup got phoned here. They planted a tree twenty inches from a light bulb. You know, who, who does this stuff? Uh, and, um, the other problem with Washington Avenue, I think you're aware of it, all our wires are underground, so that's another reason not to have roots, you don't need to, uh, to hang on it. So, um, I got a few more of mine for next meeting, alright? So, please, don't fall back, let's see action, I wanna see this car out there, throw them a crack. Thank you.
Mr. Fleischman. Thank you. Frank Fleischman, one thirty-two, Franklin Street. Um, in kind of a segue with the firehouse, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, you can probably make a full day out of it, okay? In addition to opening the firehouse, why don't you do what you, to Franklin Street, what you did to Washington Avenue, add a What's Up Silver Lake event? Walk the streets, and so you can talk to the, uh, just the, just our, our landlord, who has had one of the oldest businesses existing still in that area, who probably have a lot to tell you about. One of the things he asked you to bring to your attention is that, on Washington Avenue, you have during the Christmas season, you have the decorations on the light poles and, and other such things. He would like to see that actually in Silver Lake. You know, that would attract, you know, it would make it look nice during, you know, during the holiday season, and, you know, maybe attract a little more, give a few more customers to the area. Um, there's a new business I believe coming in now, it's gonna be like a taco and a cheesesteak restaurant, something like that. Um, that, that's a pretty good sign that things are starting to pick up in Silver Lake. But it'd be great for you to, uh, to come through and, uh, and take a look. Um, I was interested in ordinance number one, can you explain that to me a little bit? About the alcohol coverage permission?
I'm gonna ask, one second. Sure. Yeah, what, I mean, I'm gonna have you finish.
That's fine, okay, thank you. Also, um, I believe you went over this in your, um, in the caucus meeting, but most of us have been finding out what the interest is in seven oh five, the seven five seven Main Street, um, you know, being investigated to be either a non-combination area, neither of the, or a combination area, neither of the, at all. And that's about it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take that last one, I gotta do, do we see it?
Okay, no matter. Thank you.
Excuse us a minute. I really just can't see you, that's the problem.
This is purely a procedural issue.
Yeah. Which one?
Clarify, Mike?
Yeah, let me have one of you guys.
Keep in mind our policy that this is a comment session, not a question and answer period, alright? Mr. Fleischman, why don't you call Mr. Martino's office tomorrow, and he'll be happy to explain to you in great detail exactly what that entire ordinance is about.
Okay. Mr. Fleischman, if you wanna read your number, I'll call you. Absolutely, I'll be on the media.
Carmella, sign in, Mike.
Yeah, I did, I put my cellphone down, I'm gonna dial it.
Thank you.
I'll get you next, sir. You wanna sign in?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sana, the Angeria Capo Tano, and I reside at Fortin, More Place, in my parents' home. Uh, I have a little bit of a, both same issues as some of the people have here with speeding down the street. I am the only through street from Franklin Avenue to, uh, to Safe Avenue that goes to Nutley. More Place and Bellevue runs into More Place and Nutley. So, the people that don't wanna wait at the light on the Safe Avenue, cut down my street, and it's, it's a speeding problem like everybody else here is having. The issue I'm having is with my neighbor across the street. Number one, he is operating a business at his house, a car service at his house, which is twenty-four hours a day. He backs these cars, classic cars, backs them into his driveway, so whether it be summer, whether it be winter, he has to pick somebody up in the winter, he wants to leave his car running to warm up, the lights are shining in my bedroom and up. So, it's like, and this is like over an hour he does this. Besides this, he has illegal basement apartment, which about nine people on my block have. I'm sure this is a ongoing problem in the town too, and we really have to have somebody crack down on it. I know sometimes if inspectors come, they knock on the door, nobody answers, who don't speak English, it, it's always a story, so you have to keep up on this because it's not fair. My dad passed away eight years ago, my mother's doing it all by herself, eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, that's the tenant, you know? Another thing that I'm having with this particular neighbor is, his tenant moved out four months ago. Since, and he must pick people up at the airport, or meet them at the airport, or wherever he meets them, and he is running an Airbnb. So, I have people going in this house, moving out at two o'clock in the morning, moving out the next morning, moving in the next morning at seven o'clock, who's staying one day, who's staying another day. One person backed up into my father's truck, who's like parked in front of my father, in front of their house. You know, you don't know who did it, you have no cameras, you can't condemn or accuse anybody, you know what I mean? But, I never heard of this happening in a residential area, it's bringing down the neighborhood, it's bringing, it's bringing down your property value. I mean, my house alone, like I said, we're, we're all good in my house. I spend a hundred and sixty dollars a week on a landscaper to make my house look presentable. You know, I don't care whether everybody has a neighbor that doesn't throw this out, or doesn't throw that out, I worry about my own, you know? But, this situation that I'm having across the street, it has to be addressed. I called code enforcement today, they're gonna try to get on it, she didn't get back to me, I didn't have an inspector get back to me, all is amassing timely, Mayor, Council, let this be addressed, please. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian McCann, I live at one seventy-two Delvin Avenue. Uh, back in May, I saw the resurfaced program, posted on the website, and the street's out there gonna get redone. I questioned it at the time, because there's a street on there that's getting redone, that has already been resurfaced, that has the Belgium block already. My block has nothing. I'm on a block that's about nineteen houses, I'm off of Bellevue Avenue, I'm on a dead-end street, I'm off against the golf course. My mother-in-law lives with me, she's handicapped. This is her spot in the front of my house, okay? I've been in contact with the town, Mr. Rolville, on May twenty-third, he's been in contact with the town manager and a few other people, and they know about this. The main problem was two big trees in front of my house, okay? I finally got an answer today from this polite, that they're finally, they gave me a date, the trees are gonna come down on Friday, which is all well and good, but my street needs to be resurfaced. Smallwood Avenue has already been done, they had the Belgium block. I lived there eighteen years, my mother-in-law lived there over fifty years. Nothing has ever been done to this street. I don't think Smallwood Avenue should get resurfaced, but my block hasn't even been done yet. And it's only a block and a half long, it's off of Bellevue Avenue. Her spot, she can't even get into her trunk when she parks her car here to get groceries out of it. I have to go down there and move her car and back in into the driveway to get the groceries out of it. I don't think that's right. She's an eighty-two-year-old woman, and you know how hard it is to tell her, like, you can't drive anymore? She doesn't wanna hear that, I don't wanna take her, her, um, independence away from her, it's very hard to tell her that. So, she goes and gets her hair done, she goes to the store, that's the extent of her driving. I don't think that the spot in the front of my house should be like this. The street is uneven, it's pitched this way, you can see the water there, it never leaves my driveway. In the winter, it's an ice skating rink there. This has to be rectified. The DPW knows about this, because when they come down my street in the, in the winter to plow, they say to me, their plows hit the manholes because they're raised, and the street is not paved correctly. So, this problem needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed ASAP.
Are those pictures already started, reflect them?
You can have them, yes. Mr. Rolville knows about this, because he's been in contact with the town manager, and I left him a message today also, because they said I had to come here and listen to it. But what I don't understand is how you can do a street that's already been done and resurface that street when there's other streets that haven't been resurfaced, like mine?
Thank you, sir. As the, uh, next, who's next? As the next person's coming up, I'm just gonna give you a quick little, little answer, because we can't do back and forth, right? The, the one issue that I saw there was called piling, uh, that's something that we can rectify. Usually, we wait until we are gonna resurface the street, if it's, if it's on the list. If it's not on this list, which I don't think it is, I was actually talking to the town manager today of our next batch of streets. Um, so that's gonna, we will definitely have the engine to look at it, if it looks, the rest of the street looks as bad as that, then I could probably say it's gonna be on our list that we're gonna do next year.
Ward days, the sun doesn't dry out.
Sure, it's called piling, yeah, that's, I'm aware of it, you're not the only one that's got it, but we can definitely address it. Usually, they wait to address it until we're gonna do the street, but if not, there is a corrective measure that they can do. And I, and I will tell you, it might sound a little crazy to you, but in a weird way, all streets are not equal. So, sometimes there are streets that qualify for certain money, different grant money, different federal money, so that's why, uh, we just can't go by worst, worst street to the best streets. Um, certain streets qualify for stiff, hot of money. Uh, so that's why you might see a street get paved twice in twenty years, and other streets not. Uh, but we'll, we'll get you an answer as to whether or not we can do corrective measure, and how quickly we can get that street on holiday surgery. I, thank you for coming. Thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna address the rest of the session.
Another one, five Belt Street. Other question, um, the agenda's got me out here, I noticed they have a list of ordinances about Oklahoma. Would it be possible, sometime in the near future, start posting the ordinances online so we can read them instead of coming here and have to read them on the board? I think it would be a lot easier. Any of the, um, you know, resolutions just ahead of, well, you really have to ask the question. I think it's time we come to the chronic world and start, uh, letting people see, a little more transparent. And, and, and we're all for speeding, I agree with the speeding, but there's nothing worse than stop signs, people can't read what they mean. That's the biggest problem I got. I, I, I'm afraid to go through an intersection at this point, especially where I live. Just have one more question there. I think it was in, uh, June sometime, there was a contract that, uh, governing body voted on, it was June fourth, maybe? And if I recall correctly, I'm just picking up different grants on this, and I tried to read it on, I mean, listen to it online, but it's all bumbling, I couldn't make it out. There was a change to one of the union contracts at the eleventh hour. My question is, when was the council apprised of the change? Did they know about it? And was that, and if I listened to it carefully, it was rescinded, the or, the resolution again?
Alright, yeah, just, I'm gonna have to, let you finish your comment right there. And then, if we can get, we'll come in.
So, what I'm alluding to, because the way, the way I'm looking at it, is it was something that was done at the eleventh hour, and it wasn't, the public was not aware of it when we left the meeting, we just thought it was a general, general, uh, you know, general contract, two percent, whatever, three percent, whatever they got.
The manager wasn't aware.
Okay, the manager wasn't aware. So, my question here is, but this is what I'm alluding to. My question is, if the, how could a council possibly vote on something if the manager didn't approve it? The manager negotiates all contracts. The coun, the council does not negotiate contracts privately, but my question is, did any council members privately know about this before they even came to that meeting? And if they did, shame on them, because the governing body has the right to consult and investigate, committee appointed to the Boston Racks to investigate, if their former peers knew about this before the manager.
Thank you, sir. Uh, well, she's coming as far as assigning the books. Mary, I won't let you know, and if you don't know, Mary, Mary's a former mayor, he's sat up here, so he's well abreast of, you know, how, how things are on. We do have the agendas online now, and that's something to add.
I, I know that, yeah, but I'm still not reading highly.
Any ordinances, any orders of resolutions, I'm gonna be concerned with. Um, and the rest of your comment, you can't go back and forth, but the rest of your comments, you probably know the answer, it's coming, it may be a matter of litigation, so we can't comment on it.
So, we're telling you, we can't do it. And the problem is, um, on my street, a few weeks ago, there was like a lot of car vandalize. Maybe there's more kids, you know, there's one in the morning, and one's with my daughter-in-law, so, right inside my house, and, and it's not. And even though like around one-thirty, two o'clock when the bar closes, there's like a party going on in the bar. And I'm there, like I have to get, you know, I wake up, I have to go work in the morning, my granddaughter goes to school in the morning, and nothing is done. And if you walk out here, like I threw the day, there's beer cans stuck everywhere. You know, even like on the sidewalk, it's insane, literally, like the music is blasting, and it's just not fair. Like, you know, I have to wake up at two o'clock, hang all that asleep, and it's not. And, you know, like I said, maybe more cop car, you know, around that time, but that's when the problem is.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to breathe, I'm sure.
Yeah. Or try this.
Or try this morning.
We, we had, thank you. Anybody else? Sir? No? Motion made in second, the closing of the hearing, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paul Riley. DePena? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Natori? Yes. Shulover? Yes. Mayor Melvin? Yes.
We are resolutions. Uh, any?
Councilmember, please, for thirty-three one. Thirty-three one? Yes.
Anybody else? Kelly, do you want us to, like, pull that one from the phone, right? You got that?
Excuse me, I need a minute.
Did we spell that?
No, it's...
Make a motion for the consent agenda.
Consent.
Motion made in second, clerk call roll, consent agenda.
Councilmember Paul Riley. DePena? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Natori? Yes. Shulover? Yes. Mayor Melvin?
I'm gonna vote yes on that, and unfortunately, I forgot to poll thirty-seven, so can we poll, can we say yes to that consent? Accept on thirty-seven?
Yes.
And head thirty-seven to the list that we want to poll?
Okay.
Poll by Councilmember Paul Riley, it's a resolution third. You got a motion? What's motion?
The seconded.
Motion made in second. Agree with the explanation? Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paul Riley.
That's good.
DePena? No. Graziano? No. Natori? No. Shulover? No. Mayor Melvin? No. Resolution is defeated.
Resolution thirty-one? Any questions? Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paul Riley.
That's good.
DePena? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Natori? Yes. Shulover? Yes. Mayor Melvin? Yes. Resolution defeated.
Resolution thirty-seven? Motion?
Make the motion.
Motion made in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paul Riley. Yes. DePena? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Natori? Yes. Shulover? Yes. Mayor Melvin?
Same? New business? Just one.
I have a resolution on privacy, negotiated settlement agreement, and general lease and execution of the agreement between the Bellevue Public Library and Hughes, Hughes Judy. Do you want to go ahead? Yeah. Whereas the township received, they noted court claim from the attorney for Hughes Judy against the Bellevue Public Library, and whereas the parties have negotiated, they've actually accepted a resolution on the four-year matter, and it sounds to have included covenant agreement and general lease to be executed by the parties. And whereas the sole and obvious management does not constitute admission of liability or fault of any nature, now therefore be resolved, one, that the mayor and the governing body of the township of Bellevue approved a settlement of ten thousand dollars payable to Hughes Judy. Two, the mayor needs to clarify with the township of Bellevue by what price, a settlement agreement, and receive a general, general release between Hughes Judy and the Bellevue Public Library. Three, the settlement of this matter does not constitute an admission of liability or fault of any nature. Be you further resolved that in the event that a portion of this resolution is determined by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, then such portion of this resolution shall be served to account, and the remainder of the resolution unaffected thereby. Be you further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be published out of the power of law within ten days of this case.
Motion? Make a motion? Second. Motion made in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paul Riley. DePena? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Natori? Yes. Shulover? Yes. Mayor Melvin? Yes.
Yes, we're waiting on you.
Here.
I don't hear a shot. No, no, no. Motion to adjourn?
Uh, before we adjourn, I just want to, uh, just want to add one thing, um, Ms. Jacko mentioned the Ecuadorian library, but you left out the date of time. It's Thursday, twelve to four here at Town Hall, twelve during the day.
There's a lot of...
A great pool dancing. There's a little dance higher than it seems.
I, I just wanna thank, um, Mr. Fleischman about the, um, the Christmas decorations, because I've been trying for fourteen years to get Christmas decorations in Silver Lake, and no dice.
Wasn't my idea, but...
Also, also, I just wanna say, anybody that was invited to, uh, the Silver Lake Block Party has been canceled until September. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
To adjourn?